His group are here to give an update on Camp Bonneville. And for those of you who are on the call, just a reminder to mute yourselves until you're presenting to decrease the background noise. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. Good morning, Council. Thanks for your time. The intent of this presentation is mainly to give you an update. We came to front of you over a year ago. And that time, we just gave you overview when some of the projects going to be done, the cleanup efforts, and then also we're going to do some planning for the master plan. So we have reached to the point where the cleanup is a conclusion. And we just want to give you an update what has been done since. And then kind of go for a little bit high level of the scoping for next step, like the master planning for the parks and things like that. And then at the end, we'd like to ask you for some direction in terms of involvement, public outreach, things like that. And we'll also have a little bit update on the efforts on the forest management, thinning, and also fire prevention. So we have our teams who have been working on this project on this call, and they will give you a little more details on that. So the next slide, please. So today, we're going to go over the cleanup update that's getting to the end. Also, there's some requirement for regulatory closeout that we'll give an update. The grant that we've been receiving from the Army and the closeout of that process. Institution controls, engineering controls, forest management. As I mentioned, that we've been doing that for a number of years. And we've been getting some of the funds with that, which we're going to utilize for the master plan and other efforts within the Camp Bonneville. The other thing I mentioned that public process that we want to ask your direction, how the extent of it, the scope of it. And then the master planning phases that where we are right now and where we're going to go the next steps. And then at the end, like I mentioned, your guidance on a few items. So with that, our next slide, please, and I'll turn it over to Greg Johnson, who's been part of this project for over 18 years. So he has a lot of history, and he's going to take the next few slides and go over that history and what's been done from the cleanup perspective. With that, I'll turn it over to Greg Johnson. Greg?
Good morning, councilors. My name is Greg Johnson. I'm the program manager for the Camp Bonneville cleanup and moving forward for the reuse. A little bit of overview of the site. It's 3,840 acres, approximately six square miles. Department of Defense owned it from 1909 to 1995. So it saw training out here for World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and wrapped up with the Persian Gulf War. It was transferred, formally transferred to Clark County in 2011. We now, we own it, we have the deed for it. The cleanup completion is almost done. The unexploded ordinance phase of the cleanup, we wrapped that up in May. And right now, we're working on the expansion of the impact area and putting in a fence and finishing up a couple of bridges. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the, this is the vision of the regional park. The green area, the darker green area, is the wildlife management area. The pink colored is the central impact area. That area was expanded by approximately 105 acres because we found some unexploded ordinance on the boundary. Then the tan colored area, that's the central valley floor. That had the most extensive cleanup. We cleaned that, basically sterilized that, cleaned it down to 14 inches. That's where the park will be. So all the activities of the park will be in there, with the exception of some of the roads, the hiking roads and trails. The gray area is the western slope. And that area will be, will also be, with the exception of the trails, will be off limits, and it will be treated like the wildlife management area. Next slide, please. Okay, the next two, the net, these two slides here are a breakdown of what's been accomplished since we started this. And like I said, we started, this was started over 20 years ago. But remedial action unit one, that was the site-wide hazardous waste. It's been complete now for about 15 years. That was the fuel oil tanks, the lube pits, standard hazardous waste. Then remedial action unit 2A, that was the lead contamination. We had 21 small arms ranges out here. And those, those were wrapped up about, oh, about seven, eight years ago, the cleanup for those. And then remedial action unit 2B were two different demolition areas. Those were cleaned down to, cleared down to 14 inches also. Remedial action unit three, that was the site-wide institutional control. I'm sorry, site-wide munitions and explosives of concern. That was all the munitions response areas. The first phase was the central valley floor. That took about, pretty close to three years to complete. And that was where the park was going to be. So we made sure we cleared that all the way down to 14 inches. The second phase was demolition areas and firing points. Those, those were completed about, oh, three years ago. And the final phase was the western slopes. And we wrapped that up in May. That took about two years, so that's 100% complete. Those, the remaining, what we have remaining now is remedial action unit 2C, which is the site-wide groundwater. We're about 90% complete on that. We we, we cleared the it was demolition area three was, had a lot of groundwater contamination. We cleared it in 2004, down to about 28 feet. And the, it's in a kind of a clay bowl. So some of the groundwater contamination is still there. It's been thoroughly tested, and it is not a problem for human health or the environment at this time. And we will continue to monitor that into perpetuity until it, until it drops below the cleanup levels established by the EPA and the state. We should be done with that. The, what we have remaining on that is the RIFs and the cleanup action plan, working with ecology. We should be all through that by March 2021. The expansion, the central impact area, we're 98% complete with that. We should be done with that by the end of the month. Okay, next slide, please. And this slide is pretty much the same one, so we'll move on to the next one. Okay, now we're, we're getting to, we're at the end of the cleanup now, so we're starting to work on the closeout and the reuse guidance for the federal and the state. The federal portion, it's conservation conveyance. That's how the property was transferred to us. And it, it pretty much states that the property can only be utilized for its intended use. And the intended use was basically nine specific components. The regional park, law enforcement training center, rustic retreat, outdoor school, Native American Cultural Center, Clark College Environmental Education, trails, nature area, an FBI range, and timber resource management and habitat restoration. The property deed that we received from the Army has basically site-wide institutional controls that we need to implement to keep people from going into the wrong areas and dig restrictions and things like that. Then under the state, we are under a PPCD, which is prospective purchaser consent decree. That's the legal agreement we have with the Department of Ecology that mandates the cleanup levels and the post-transfer land uses based on what we found during the cleanup. And then the finding of suitability for early transfer, or abbreviated as FOSET, that's the decision document that we had to get signed by the governor in order to allow the property to be transferred to Clark County early for the cleanup. Next slide, please. The Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement, or ESCA, that's the, the grant we've been under through, from the Department of the Army. They've basically been paying for, they paid for the entire cleanup plus the care and feeding of the site. This goes back to 2006. So we're, as we're wrapping up here, we have some reconciliation to do. So it's been about 14 years, so there was a lot of, a lot of money was spent and a lot of money was not spent. With, as far as the munitions part, we have approximately 700,000 remaining to return over six different deliverables. We need to reconcile that. We're going to start that in November and should have that wrapped up by February. And then the non-munitions grant, we have approximately $4 million remaining over seven deliverables. We're going to begin that in March, as soon as the groundwater is done, and we'll end that in June. Then what we have remaining for the federal government is a, we have to do a final after-action report to the Army Corps of Engineers, letting them, basically describing all the munitions cleanup that's been done to date. And then we will close out with the federal government. Next slide, please. This is the pre-purchaser consent decree, the agreement we have with the state. It has the institutional controls plan. We need to write that and get that to them right around January 21st. That's Department of Ecology. We're also working with them side by side, developing this. The end of that should be June 2021, right about the time the grant closes out. And we should receive a final site-wide, no further action determination from Department of Ecology in July 2021. And that's the same month the, the grant closes out. Then Ecology will exit, the Army will exit, and we will be the sole property owners. Okay, institutional controls. These are things that we're going to implement to, basically to keep people out of areas they shouldn't be in and from doing things they shouldn't do. They're non-engineered restrictions, access. We block access and exposure to land, groundwater, surface water, waste, waste disposal areas. Restrictions on zoning permitting, public advisories, and installation of master plans. These include like kiosks, coloring books, pamphlets, videos people can watch, and things like that. Next slide, please. Engineering controls, these are actually physical barriers. There are fences and lock gates, markers, signs, other physical barriers. Could be blackberries, vine maple, things like that. Water features like ponds and creeks. And then we'll preserve the information and data to inform the current and future generations of the hazards and risks that are remaining at Camp Bonneville. Next slide, please. This is a slide of the off-limits areas for the park. The tan areas will basically be off-limits with the exception of the green roads and trail systems that are going through there. They, all the roads and trails, there's 42 miles of them on the site. They've, they've been cleared for the road and then 20 feet on either side. The, the pink area, that's the central impact area. That will be off-limits fenced in in perpetuity. And the red, the red lines on the roads around that, that's right now is a thousand-foot buffer where we will have lock gates to keep people out of there. And the only people who will have access to that will be train county employees. At this point, I'll turn this over to Kevin Tyler. Thank you.
Good morning, councilors. For the record, Kevin Tyler, Clark County Public Works, Parks and Lands Division. If we could go to the next slide, please. So wanted to give you an update on the forest management at the site. I've been working with Hunter Decker, our forester, and before that Jim Van Lying, to do the forest management at Camp Bonneville since 2012. In that time, we've thinned approximately 950 acres out of the almost 4,000 acres of Camp Bonneville. And our focus has largely been thinning for forest health. As part of that thinning, you know, we also see a reduction in the, you know, the fuel loading, reduction in the amount of fuel that can burn. And, and that reduces the risk of catastrophic wildfire. Greg mentioned all of the cleanup operations. You know, those have also had an effect on the amount of fuels that could burn during a wildfire. All of those efforts have removed the understory vegetation such that, you know, so that they can do that cleanup work. The, the management plan for Camp Bonneville is certified by two bodies. One is the Forest Stewardship Council, and the other is the American Tree Farmers Sustainable Forestry Initiative. And under that, under those certifications, you know, our focus is sustainable forestry, which means that, you know, we can harvest or thin up to approximately 2,000, 2 million board feet every year. And if, if we continue that based on the incremental growth of trees, we could do that in perpetuity. And, you know, some of you were involved in 2017 when we adopted that the countywide forest stewardship plan. It includes Camp Bonneville and several other properties. And for Camp Bonneville specifically, those timber revenues are reinvested in the property. Next slide, please. So this is a map that our forester put together, and it shows the thinning operations that we have undertaken since 2012. You can see it covers a large portion of the property. And this is just to give you an idea of where we've been. Our, our efforts in the next couple of years will start to move to the east as we help to improve road infrastructure. Next slide, please. And then lastly, I just wanted to give you an update on budget versus expenses and revenue that we've received with the timber management operations. So this is all of the, the work since 2000, 2012, 2013. Bottom line is, at this point, the fund, the timber fund has a balance of approximately 2.5 million. This was updated as of August. I just saw the September report, and it's down to 2.524 million. So you can see, you know, with those operations, you know, we can bring in some pretty substantial revenue. And also, you know, it also costs money to make money. So, you know, we need to spend money in order to improve the roads to get to the eastern part of the property. There's a decision package to be considered this coming year, 2021. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have. But that's it for the timber fund right now.
Questions to the council on the timber fund?
Madam Chair. The impact area, and I think your slide's pretty much answered the question I was having. It's, it's roughly about 500 acres that'll be off-limits. And I saw that in a red hash mark, that you have not been doing thinning or timber harvesting there because of a safety hazard. And I'm assuming that's going to continue forever. So my question is, do we build a fire break around that central impact area as 500 acres of very heavily fuel-loaded terrain?
I think that's a good question, and it's something that we, we absolutely could do. Greg can probably speak to the current condition. I know with the expansion, we have recently built a road around that expansion area, and we also logged that area before they put in the road. But the other three sides, absolutely, that's something that we could do.
I think also want to just add to what Kevin said about those log roads that we're going to be putting around as part of the decision package for next year. They'll also help to provide access for emergency responders and other things that in case there's an emergency. So it's all have a dual purpose, those roads. So be really beneficial for the operation of the Camp Bonneville.
Does that answer your question?
It's a great food for thought, as, you know, I think close to the heart of all those that live in the forests around that area is wildfire mitigation and fire breaks and access for the first responders, as Ahmad just mentioned. I, I think we generally have an information gap between what has been done, what could be done. So we'll discuss that, I'm sure, later on in this presentation. Basically, the public participation piece.
I also, I would also add that the counties, through our forester, has been working on what we call a value loss prevention plan. And we started that process with Department of Natural Resources and including some of the neighbors, and also our Fire Marshal's office. And the idea is to take a look at the resources that surround Camp Bonneville. And those are, you know, every, every resource that the community finds benefit in, including residences and property and those types of things. And then it identifies where the risks, where the risks are highest, so that we can start to plan our efforts on thinning or fire breaks or things of that nature, where they make the most sense and can provide the most protection. So that's a process that's already started.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for those answers.
I had a question of Greg, because when, when I saw the map, I just, I wanted to ask exactly, once we open this Camp Bonneville up to the public in any way, shape, or form, are, I want to be assured that the area that is off-limits is really secure from the public. In other words, what kind of, what are we going to do to really make that secure? That, that the public won't get in there. Sometimes having a, you know, even, even a fence saying not to enter sometimes is an invitation to some individuals.
This is Greg. You are correct, we, we need to keep that area off-limits. There would, we could never possibly say that we got everything within that area. So if, on the, on slide number 12, what we have there is the, the footprint is kind of the lighter pink color. And that will have a five-strand barbed wire fence with signage every 50 feet. And then all entrance and egress routes to the impact area will be gated and locked. And only train county employees will, will be going in there. We'll also be making rounds. We'll have a, we'll be able to fully circumvent the impact area, and we have to make those rounds. And as trees and limbs and things like that fall on the fence, it'll be in a constant state of repair. And also, you know, our institutional controls, the videos, the kiosks, flyers, things like that, will all point to the impact area and telling people to stay out. But you're, you're correct, there's always the chance that somebody will, you know, jump a fence or something like that. So our best cure for this is just, you know, vigilance.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Counselor?
I have a follow-on question to that, which is perhaps more of a question for legal and risk, and the answer can come back. But related to the chair's question, regardless of what we put up trying to help keep people out of this area, if we know that there is likely to be some kind of, that people will make the effort to get in there, what, what impact does that have on our insurance, on our liability? I think that'd be important for us to know going in.
So I don't know if Emily, or Taylor, or myself want to weigh in on that. Emily, I'll defer to you if you want to, and if not, I can, I can address that question. So for now, it may be me. So this property, like any other property, will be subject to the duties of a property owner in the state of Washington. It does have the specific aspect of having formerly been a range, which makes it what they call possibly an attractive hazard. The state of Washington requires you to put up measures that are reasonable measures to keep people aware of and away from known hazards on the property. The law does not contemplate absolute measures that, to keep people out of hazardous areas. It simply contemplates that the landowner, knowing that there's a hazard there, will reasonably warn and reasonably prohibit invitees or even trespassers to the property to stay away from that hazard. And so as long as we are doing what is reasonable, and I think what Greg mentioned with regards to the fence, the closed-off ingress and egress, the, the patrols around the closed-off areas to ensure that people are, are staying out of those areas and maintaining the fence lines, and the education, which is, I think, is a fundamental component of mitigation of liability. The education of anybody who's invited onto the property will be what is required of the county. Obviously, we cannot mitigate our risk down to a, a, a no-risk situation, especially not on a property like this. But if we take reasonable and diligent efforts to warn and prohibit people from going into the hazardous areas, that's about as much as the law's going to require, and that's about as much as we're going to be able to do with this property. Does that answer your question, Counselor Lentz?
Enough for now. Thank you.
Okay.
A follow-on question regarding, you know, I haven't been through the area other than the road that what we were allowed to get a tour on. But I do see from the, several of the maps that there are some significant streams going through there. I'm assuming that none of them are fishable. I know that's really hard terrain in there, but fishing, hunting, that's all going to be disallowed for that entirety of the area. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is Greg, counselor. Yes, that is correct. Also, a follow-on to what Bill Richardson was talking about. When we entered into the agreement, the FOSET with the state and the PPCD with the ecology, the, the Army agreed to accept liability for any unexploded ordinance mishaps.
Good to know. Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, I think we're ready to move to the next portion.
I think Lena, she's online, and she was going to go over these slides. So Lena, you want to try? I think Galena, she's online and she was going to go over these slides, so Galena, want to try? So if we can hear it. I don't think we can, we're able to hear. So I, I can go ahead and go over them real quickly and, and then she'll text me if there was, or chat if she has additional inputs on those. So, so now that we're going to reach the conclusion of the cleanup, the next thing is well, as we mentioned last year, Counsel, that we want to do the master planning for the, the park portion of it. So one thing that be, you know, be intense public process and that will involve and that's something that we at the end will ask your input and direction in terms of number of committees or committee, the public in the neighborhood and also effort in the countywide in terms of outreach, because we believe this is a regionally significant park, because it's going to have a lot of our activities that probably our parks does not have or not have that. So and then relationship with our community to make sure that everybody is, is transparents what things we're going to do, the improvement of the parks, identify the needs for the park, and if there are any concerns and desires that we want to make sure that goes through public process and input from the council. Identify the roles of the, when we go through the master planning process from the council, committee members, neighborhood, and also our parks advisory board will be involved in that. And then we will be, our plan is to make sure we have a very robust engagement process, and that will include our local neighborhood, internal, external stakeholders, other cities that maybe council wish to involve representative or park advisory board, the planning members, and also council members from other cities or also our county council members. Next slide, please.
Ahmad.
Yes, go ahead. Oh, Galena, we can.
I am so, this is the most embarrassing thing, I am so sorry. Just thank you, everyone, for covering most of my talking points for today. As Ahmad had mentioned, we are in the process where we would like to get your confirmation of the planning strategy, including using community work groups and their proposed makeup, where believe the process will take a few months. Master planning efforts could be lengthy and our estimate in terms of funding this process is approximately $300,000. This is a package that was approved in this year's budget. The funding that we're using are timber funds. I think Kevin did a great job kind of giving you an update on that. So it would be very helpful for staff to get some direction and next steps. I know we've come to you in 2018 and 2019 and our efforts continue. That's essentially what I had planned to cover today. I don't know, Ahmad, if you would like to add anything else?
Yeah, yeah, so I'd like to add, Counsel, we're getting ready to send out the RFQs. We'd like to see if the council would like to see the detailed scoping requirements that we're going to be sending that to consulting world. And then from there, we're going to be doing some selection process. I know last time we had mentioned that we might be taking a few of them to develop some concept and then come back and go over that. So might encode some of the stuff, and we're still doing some research on that area. But we'd like to see if the council would like us to bring back the detailed scoping of the request for the qualifications that we're going to be doing from consultant. So that would be one of the questions we'd like to ask the council on that one.
Okay, Councilor McVitie.
Thank you. So I, I very much would like to see the details of that. And, and we kind of touched on it in the last slide decks. I understand that these roughly nine areas of potential uses have already been approved by the Department of Defense and the BRAC workup. So, you know, I wanted a positive answer on that. And, and some of them are quite narrow, some of them are quite broad. I'm hopeful that we can fit equestrian trails at country center, maybe even an arena place, a destination for equestrian use. We need to get our neighborhood associations put together. I'm hoping that we can get the, a regional citizens committee together as part of this outreach, if you will, on a consultant. I think that would go a long way towards a public participation if we can constitute a regionally based committee so that we can have that dialogue going, ongoing, and certainly with all the neighborhood associations as well. And some, some of that is very low cost, putting a committee together. And I think we should do that now as we look towards a consultant. But, but the starting point is what is allowed, what isn't allowed, has it been approved? We're seeing a lot of emails claiming contact with BRAC that this conservation won't allow for the kind of development we might be contemplating. I just want to get public, publicly stated ground truth on the legal basis for potential uses.
Thank you, Counselor. I think refer those to Greg Johnson, who's been managing the project and he's had a lot of communication with Army on that one and also Bill Richardson to respond to those question. Then after that, I'll go over a few other items that we'd like to ask the council direction on. Greg, did you want to start on that one and then Bill?
Yes, Counselor McVitie. I've been on the site for approximately almost 19 years. I worked for ecology for nine years prior to coming to the county. I've been at the county almost 10 years, all working on the same project down here. Ever since I've been on here, the reuse, the reuse plan and the reuse maps allowed for the same, same uses, which included the FBI firing range and the law enforcement training area. Several of the other entities have kind of moved on, like the very southwest portion of the camp. We had what was called the environmental study area. It was approximately 40 acres, and that was going to be for Clark College. Because we, originally, the Army thought we would be done with this cleanup in one to two years. And like I said, that was, that was 18 years ago. We found a lot more contamination on the property than what was anticipated. So through the years, several people have dropped off. Clark College left, exited. The Native American Cultural Center, the, the Callets were interested, and then it was taking too long, so they, they moved on. So there's, there's several entities in there that, that have moved on. And so there's, there's going to be room for other activities out here, and that will be part of the public process. But however, the, you know, the law enforcement training and the FBI range have always been on, on the reuse. And in 2006, we approached, we had to get a document together in order to make this transfer happen. It was called the FOSSET, which is the Finding of Suitability for Early Transfer. And that was the Army, Department of Ecology, and the Governor's Office. And the Governor's Office reviewed it and allowed it to, to, to move forward. And that was the intended reuse with the, with the nine activities. So the, those, those items have always been on the reuse. There's been a lot of, you know, emails back and forth that I've been part to, you know, I, I spoke with the Army yesterday. The Army is fully aware of the, the FBI range and the other, you know, uses out here. Their, the impression I'm getting from them is they're punting it to, to, they want, they want to break free of this since this was BRAC 1995. And ecology, the, the state, they're fully aware of the law enforcement training and things like that down here also. So I think it's kind of come down to, I, I agree with you, I think we do need to, to formulate a, a solid opinion, and that, that will probably be part of the public process.
Greg, can I add also, this is Galena, that one of the nine uses that Greg mentioned is a regional park.
Yes, I'm sorry, the important one.
Right, and I, you know, this, this work session has been very helpful because when you read the emails, they are diametrically different than what we are hearing from you. So I am relieved, I think, to, to hear Greg from you and how you have worked with this for so many years and are very familiar with it. And I know when I met you out at Camp Bonneville, when I took the tour, I was impressed with your knowledge and, and what you were doing out there as well. So I appreciate your input.
Thank you, Counselor.
I don't know, Bill, if you want to add anything else to what Greg said or anything else you have?
Well, I, I have seen the emails of the citizen that is complaining. I'm not prepared right now, and I'm not comfortable right now with providing a legal opinion to council on what is an otherwise public hearing. But if that's something that is required, all I need is a vote from the council for a, a legal opinion. I'll also need somewhat of a narrowed question as to what you're seeking a legal opinion on. I can tell you that Greg has done a very good job of covering the surface level allowed uses through the legal documents, the PPCD, the FOSSET, the ESCA, all the documents that the deed, all the documents that cover the eventual or slow transition of the property from the Department of Defense to the county. But if we're looking for something more in depth than that, yeah, we're happy to do that. But I, I'll, I'll need that request to come from the council. And again, I'll need a specific request as to what you're looking for. It would be difficult to say that the, the eventual uses of the park will be lawful under the governing documents when I don't even know what the eventual uses will be because we have not gone through the planning process yet. But again, if, if we're able to craft a, a question about what, what specifically we're looking for a legal opinion on, I'll be more than happy to research that and provide it to the council.
Okay, and I'm not even sure that right at this moment, the council is ready to actually have that question. But I appreciate that you're willing, I mean, that you would take this on and need it narrowed. So I think that's something we'll think about and maybe talk about on, either at a council time together or maybe get some input at one on ones and, you know, determine what and if we would like for you to research further.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair.
And Madam Chair, so I, I, I'm not prepared to narrow down any legal questions right now. I think there's just simply an information gap. And this, as you just stated, this information provided today is great. From my point of view, ground truth as to what's allowed and what could be allowed. You know, perhaps posting the slide deck on our county page, those nine uses and maybe even that singular document where the state weighed in, ecology, the Army, where they approved all those original nine uses. I think that just having the information out there will be helpful to the public as we move forward with some kind of a public participation plan, which I'm hoping will be robust.
Thank you, Counselor. I just want to add, we do have a dedicated page to Camp Bonneville and the project and the cleanup. We added an FAQ and will add additional information to that document. It's on the same page. We've posted some of the documents that could be helpful and easily understood online as well. We could certainly add more. Thank you for that point.
I think to add what Galena said, we already had put information about our efforts in terms of minimizing the fire, fire risk, the forest health and the thinning, and also our plan for the, that timber roads, which also could be used for emergency response, and also our cooperative effort with the DNR when, when we allow them to use their helicopters for immediate responses for fires within the area or within the region. So those, and also our work with other fire districts within that area. There was also really nice detailed email from Fire Chief about that and the response and the planning for that area. So we put all that information there, it's available, and we'll continue to add more information as we get that for the public use.
Okay, are, is your presentation complete or, and are you ready for input or were there more slides?
I just have a couple more things I want to ask the council for direction, then I'll open up for your input. So I, we mentioned the public participation. I like to get direction from council, how big they want the committees or number of committees, and then also number advisory committees, what their capacities that you like to see. And then some of the strategies, how we like to get involved in the master planning process. And what are the timeline you like to see that? Because I think the master plan will take about a year to do. And if you want to see that, if that's a sufficient time, or if you want to see extended or shortened, I would like to do that. And the other thing that's really important for us to make sure that, and now we're part of the requests for proposal from our qualification from consultant, is that we want to make sure that are we, the council like to do activities that give us 100% cost recovery for maintenance and make sure that's self sustaining part? Or is this something that there might be some additional fund that's going to be allocated for that to operate that park? Because that would be really important for us to set in that way, we make sure whatever uses that goes in there that brings some revenue back, that makes sure that it's cost neutral to the county and it's self sustaining to operate and allow the public to use that area. So those are the last question I have for council too. And if you're not ready, we can come back later and talk about that later on too.
Okay, I, I think that we can, we can probably add some things that, I mean, we could start talking about this right now. We only have a few minutes, we have about 11 minutes. But I, I, I guess I would invite the council to, to start making comments about it. I do think that it would be a good idea to put out an RFQ or P, whatever it is for, and kind of the scope of that, we, we need to know, I think the council should be very involved in the scope of that. So if you, you know, if you are coming up with one, we, we need to see the exact scope of that. I do think it should be really more of a 30,000 foot level look with ideas, because looking at the, the last bullet point, as I recall, I think most, most of the council at the time that we started looking at this really wanted for this to pay for itself, unless, you know, I don't know, the only other area that we could get it from, and yet this is a question, is are park impact fees used for regional parks or not?
I think that park impact fees are for just the capital improvement, land acquisition, but not for maintenance or keeping the project.
Yeah, right, now I, now I recall, okay. So those fees would not be used for maintenance. And so that, you know, I'm talking in terms of actually building it, keeping it going, et cetera. So as far as, as that goes, I would open the discussion with the council about their thoughts on that.
Madam Chair, you just mentioned something that I just wanted to segue off of because, you know, some of the road intersections within that area are in poor design, poor shape, can barely handle if, and not handle well, all the development that's occurred in that region. So, and we just had this question about park impact fees and the, the intersection with the road uses and even if it's just an egress and ingress into a particular park. So, I mean, we need to look very carefully as we look at increasing the traffic into a destination area to make sure we're mindful of improving the safety and flow on these rural roads.
Madam Chair.
It says Counselor Olson. Is this Counselor Olson?
Yes, I apologize.
Go ahead.
So I'm wondering, given sort of where we, what, what staff is asking us for right now, if, if staff couldn't sort of, this is not the first time we've done a, a plan or had a public participation process. If you could come to us with a general outline of what you're thinking in terms of the folks on the committees, the numbers of committees, the path that you might see is the best way to get us there. And then we can provide some feedback and input on that so that there's some structure already there for us. And certainly in terms of self-sustaining, I think, I think that has to be required. Otherwise, we're gonna be digging into already troubled maintenance funds for our parks. So that, just some thoughts about that.
Other comments of the council? I would agree that a framework would be great for us to have. What I will say though is I really want to emphasize, this is a regional park and anybody that we have participating in this committee in an advisory capacity needs to be from around the entire county. So not, and we need to include people who are impacted most, those that live near there. But I do, I, and so we would include that, but we need to have a very broad, as far as locale, locate, locations, you know, their locale and where they're coming from so that they can have input in it too. But that being said, I, I think Counselor Olson's suggestion that we kind of have some things we can choose from, even though we've done this, I don't know how many, seems like we've done this before. So maybe you can remind us what you've already, you know, come forward with for us. So, so that we can, you know, move ahead with that. Are there other comments of the council?
And Madam Chair, I did wanna mention that because we did have open discussion when, when on what that committee would look like, how big it would be. I think the only thing that's changed since then is the realization that the committee really needs representatives from the region, not just immediately adjacent to Camp Bonneville. So, I mean, I think we already discussed, we already had in place a plan for a committee. I would suggest that probably the numbers would look identical. It's just where do they come from? How were they recruited? You know, I think that's a new question that we really haven't discussed.
Right. I, I would assume, and as we ask for other volunteers of various committees and advisory boards, it seems to me it would be a public process to ask for, you know, those candidates who want to put their name forward to serve on this. And when we do that, I think that we should, we should also notify these individuals when we put this out that the time that may be involved so that they're sure that they can participate and are willing to participate at the level that we will need them to be involved. Other comments?
Chair?
Counselor?
Yeah, I very much support asking staff to come back with a template, your recommended direction. I think we should seek cost recovery to the extent possible. I think some of that depends on, for me, depends on what the plan is. But, and timeline, I think a year or more is quite reasonable. But I very much, and I also would like to see the RFQs. I think that the council should be involved in those. So I support that. But yeah, if you could bring back something for us to give input on, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Even if it's the same information that you gave us before? Madam Chair.
We can pull it together, yeah.
Counselor Blom?
So I'm supportive of that approach as well. The only question I would ask or add on is, I think we heard a number of like 2 million board feed a year that can be harvested out of there. I'd be curious how, if those revenues can be used to support the development and ongoing operation of it or if that has to be kept separate in the timber fund. I know typically those amounts ought to be separate, but if it's from the same site, if there was some ability to use some of that revenue to keep going with operations, I think that would be very beneficial to know.
Didn't I hear, actually, I appreciate that question, Counselor Blom, but, because I would have understood from what we heard earlier that it could be used right there at Camp Bonneville. Am I wrong? Kevin, did you wanna jump in and confirm?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Our understanding is that you can use it, reinvest it in Camp Bonneville. It's restricted to use at Camp Bonneville for purposes of the park. So that's what the language says. We could, we could add that to Bill's work for a legal opinion, but that's what the deed restrictions say.
And along those China points, it can, if we're to improve road intersections that directly impact access to Camp Bonneville as we increase usage out there, can those, those same timber funds we use to augment our road funds directly impacting Camp Bonneville?
We, we, that, that's, and that's a great counselor question, Counselor McVidney. And that is where we start stepping into the gray area and that is where we would wanna have very involved discussions with all the groups that are working with us, including Department of Ecology and the Department of Defense. Because although that is inextricably intertwined into the use of Camp Bonneville because it will cause additional impacts on the road system outside of Camp Bonneville, Kevin Tyler is also correct that superficially, the timber fund that's generated by the resources on the property is, is stated, it's limited to be used on Camp Bonneville. So we'd really have to talk to them about how far that can stretch to matters off of Camp Bonneville, if at all, as long as it was related to Camp Bonneville. So there's really, we don't, we don't have an answer, a legal answer to that question right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Got one minute. If, no, go ahead.
I just wanna recap. So just direction from council. We'll set up a schedule for, bring the details of the RFQ for, for your review and consideration. And also come up with some of the outline and structure for the committees, could be advisory committee, legislative, and we'll get your input on those. And also what are some of the possibility on cost recovery and the details on those? I'll come back to you and hopefully in a few, in a couple of weeks and then get your input before we send out the RFQ.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you all for this presentation. It was very helpful and we look forward to going forward.
Thank you so much for your time, counsel.
All right. Thank you. We are adjourned. And actually, we're adjourned for this, this work session, but stay on because we're gonna open our council time.